Good morning. It's Tuesday, March 22nd, 9:30 a.m. If you'd please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right, and we've got minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 15th and 16th Commissioner Meeting.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion or changes? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Next, open up a public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Seeing now, proceed. And first off is Jeremy Sinco, Senator Engineer.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Good morning, everyone. One resolution for consideration today, and that's declaring the necessity of rehabilitating Waymouth Road Elevated Water Storage Tank located at 3935 Waymouth Road in Medina Township and authorizing the sanitary engineer to commence advertising for tank rehabilitation bids.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Holly Muren, County Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have a new hire in maintenance, four rate increases, one at Job and Family Services, and three at Office for Adults, one leave of absence and transit, one suspension in sanitary, and one resignation in animal shelter. Second resolution is approving the three-year collective bargaining agreement between Medina County Transit Drivers Association and within Medina County Transit Department.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Good job on the contract.
Yes, thank you very much for all your work on that. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
And just to let you know, there'll be several more next week up for discussion, so they're all being voted this week, so we are moving along with final decisions.
Excellent.
Fantastic.
Thanks, Holly.
Good job. Next, our County Administrator, Scott Miller. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. So, the resolution I have for you today is approving in agreement with the Smart Dollar, for the Smart Dollar Employee Benefit Program. This is a benefit that will allow employees access to education materials to improve their financial health. Agreement is for a three-year period, annual cost of $16,961, and does cover 1,100 employees.
So, it's all the county employees?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
And we're going to get the information out to all the departments, including the electeds?
Yes, so what will happen is I will, once this is adopted, I will contact Smart Dollar, and we will put together a marketing plan, and they will basically put all the marketing materials together, send it to me, and then I will send it to, or I have Holly send it to all the employees, and probably put something in the payroll stuffer also.
And remind how we're paying for this?
We hope to pay for it through the wellness dollars through, that we get from MMO. That's, that's the goal. That's the plan.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Scott. Good program.
Richard Nelson, Chief Building Official.
Good morning.
Good morning, Richard.
I have one resolution to add an additional plan examiner to help us keep up with the commercial plans that we're getting in. This would be a two-year contract.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
We're going to need them, because there's a lot of projects coming down the pike that I hear from economic development, so...
We've been needing them for a month.
Yeah.
How quickly can you get projects over to them?
He's already got one.
Oh, good.
We better, we better vote quick.
They had a great panel session over the last Economic Development meeting last week, and it was great, but everyone's the same thing about the, obviously, staffing, materials, and of course, everything is timed and thrown back, so the, the, the more we can do to help in the, in the front end, keep that as short as possible, the better we get these projects done. So, anyway, okay, very good. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right, very good. Kathy Breitman Booker.
Speaking of economic development.
Good morning.
And since you brought up that meeting, the compliments did say that Medina County is the easiest to work with. So, all the construction panel said we were it, so...
That's right.
I bring to you two resolutions today. I know you people talk about March Madness as some sportsball thing, but for us, it's CRA season, so we have reviewed 35 CRA agreements in the townships. Lafayette Township, Liverpool Township, Sharonville, Sharon Township all have minutes attached, so you can see all that. As you mentioned, they all talked about workforce, supply chain, and inflation. So, everybody reported great years and that things are really going well. We are the same in Seville, Wadsworth, and Brunswick, so things are great. The second resolution is to update our comprehensive economic development strategy. We have the opportunity to do some work in Liverpool Township on Steel Drive. This is similar to the project we did a couple of years ago that will improve that road, allow us to expand that industrial park, which we need more industrial land. Richard wants us to have more, I'm sure. And then, we're also adding a new project in Seville, that they're doing some roadwork there as well. So, we'd like to add those two, so that they can help get funding.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathy, remind us how beneficial it was to be able to do the CRAs virtually, and what the...
Oh, my goodness.
And if you had not been able to do that, how long would have taken to actually do this?
The township CRA meeting started at 8:00 in the morning and ended about 3:30. With being able to do them on Zoom, we actually ended at 12:30. So, time-wise, it was night and day. All of those companies that are very busy and trying to get lots done had no travel time. They just logged in and did what they needed. We were able to get full participations. We didn't have any issues with getting quorums or anything like that. It was phenomenal. So, it's absolutely vital that we keep that going, and we will be communicating that to our state legislature.
I was going to suggest that.
Yes.
Yeah, because there is another end date.
Yeah, the letters being drafted.
It came up for discussion at the CCAO Board Meeting on Friday, and there is a bill that's going to be introduced or pending addition. Hopefully, we can get that story out there when they start doing hearings on this. And I think it'd be very important to continue to stress to the legislature that, okay, they may not want to do, Board of Commissioners do this. Not sure why, but they won't, but at least administratively, it makes sense for the CRAs and some of these other, other areas to be able to have that activity to go on. Much more efficient, effective, especially when you're dealing with the business community. You say you're taking the time out of their busy schedule for just a compliance, just makes so much more sense if we do it efficiently.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The Energy Special Improvement District, you know, all these different appointed boards.
Right, exactly. So, we'll have to get that story to Columbus when the time is right.
Absolutely.
Roll call, please.
Swedick? Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And Amy Lyon Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I have 12 resolutions for your consideration, but if I may, when I get to the ninth resolution, I'd like to set that aside and handle that one actually as the last one of my packet today. The first resolution is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2022 appropriation resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is the creation of a Board of Elections Primary 2022 Grant Fund and authorizing appropriations. The fourth is the creation of a Board of Elections Postage Grant Fund and authorizing appropriations. Fifth is creation of a Task Force Recovery Ohio Grant Fund and authorizing appropriations. The sixth is authorizing the purchase of 6,200 gallons of regular unleaded... Let me try that again. Regular unleaded gasoline for the Engineering Center. This is with Cuyahoga Landmark at $3,009.7 per gallon. The seventh is authorizing the expenditures related to an office for older adults sponsored Senior Day and Fall Festival. The eighth is to authorize the execution of a local jail capital project grant agreement with respect to the Medina Jail Facility. And the ninth, I will set aside, if I may, just for a moment. The 10th is allowing expenses of the county engineer. The 11th is allowing expenses of county officials. And the 12th is allowing claims and approving payments for the week in the amount of $982,094.17.
I will make a motion to approve 11 resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? My question has to do, actually, with the special funds for the elections, the postage, as well as the primary 22 fund. Now, these are funds that we're going to be able to utilize regardless of when the primary occurs?
So, these were awarded prior to the continued discussions on moving the primary, but I would expect the Secretary of State to follow suit in allowing those funds to extend by deadline, if need be, so that they could be applied. If I learn anything otherwise, I'll let you know.
Yeah, I think they go out to July 1st.
They do.
Okay, so, all right. As long as we have a primary before July 1st, these funds can be used for those purposes. Good. I'm glad to know they're paying for something. All right, very good. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then the last one, I just wanted to make sure we had an opportunity for discussion. This is a proposal to amend the Compensation Plan Administration and Point Factor Manual. This would be version 3.0 for our Medina County employees. And the reason for this request, it's a very limited request, but since the adoption of the wage study, first in September of '21, and then version 2.0 in October of '21, we've been working with all the department directors on their staff members and the application of the plan and so forth. And there are a number of positions that are either new or have been consolidated. So, you'll see in one of the tables, we are removing, moving, adding, or consolidating positions by description, and then adjusting the point factor break point for classes B and A, and then also making some corrections to the pay scale. We had originally mislabeled the mid point of the pay range in the min, so we, I mean, obviously, you could tell by number, but we've corrected it by label, and there was a correction to be made in pay scale K. And then the only other thing I'll point out is that we're still continuing to struggle in finding employees. You know, we've got several jobs posted. We've had some discussion amongst our directors and ourselves about increasing that minimum pay rate for class M. You'll see in this packet, it's still reflected as $10.45. I would recommend that, if not as part of this amendment, that we consider making that $12, because we'll be heading into the season where we're trying to hire summer help and so forth, and we're continuing to lose employees that are being paid below that $12 rate.
Are you recommending amending of that rate with this resolution?
If you would be so inclined to include that, I would, I would very much recommend that.
I know this, that resolution focuses on the pay scales. Is the narrative understanding becoming more clear to department heads? We had talked about interpretation of some of the narratives.
I do believe that the meeting that you had where Robin came from Clemens Nelson and did a description as to the mechanisms for applying that strategy was beneficial, but I do believe there's going to be some other changes that are recommended in these upcoming months, whether it's changes to the narrative, changes to the scale, or a combination of both. We're not quite prepared to present those.
If we changed M's minimum, it doesn't need, it doesn't need to change mid and max, does it?
Correct. Well, the mid would change.
Mid would change.
That would be a mathematical calculation.
Right, but at this point, we're not hiring anybody yet at the 10.45.
Well, that's a...
Are we?
That's a great question, because one of the employees who just resigned from the animal shelter was a part-time employee driving from Canal Fulton for $10 and some change and at the price of gas today, that's, that was not a...
But they've been employed at that level, but we're not bringing anybody new into that pay scale.
Well, right now, the way this narrative reads is that we, you know, we're to try to bring folks in at that lower point in the scale.
Right.
So, it just solidifies the opportunity for directors to offer 12 as a minimum.
Seems to me that, obviously, the market has changed significantly since, and that we ought to be bringing up that min.
Yeah, I will, I will make a motion to approve the resolution with the amendments to category M, changing the mid to $12, and then reflecting the, changing the min to 12 and reflecting the change in the mid also.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion on this?
I do think this is something that we need to keep under continual review, because with inflation at somewhere between 6 and 7, depending on who you listen to, these, these numbers are going to be quickly outdated. Need to make sure that we stay on top of it.
But it is nice that we now have something in place that we can make comparisons and have discussions on.
Right.
I think it's a good system.
Agreed. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Holly.
All right. Debbie Kiley, Job and Family Services Director. How are you this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning, Debbie.
First two resolutions for your consideration. The first is advertisement for proposals for getting to foster adoption recruitment services for JFS. And the second is completed agreement with the Domestic Relations Court for the Title IVB program.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Maybe a question for Scott. In the past, about this time of year, we had a application or something signed by the Domestic Relations Court to fulfill a grant. That ring a bell with you? Yes, it was around 4D, but my question is, have we, is that in process for 2022? I think it looked at the 2021 calendar year.
You're saying it's someone taking care of it all?
Well, yeah, I don't remember. It was around 4D, and it was, it was a document that we always had to have the court sign.
Yeah, it's the contract. That's this one.
That's this one?
All right, very good.
Okay.
Got it. Very good. All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Department updates?
Yep, please.
Real quickly, I'll go back to my, my normal communication to you all is go by divisions, so we'll start with the Public Assistance Division first. SNAP caseloads are still hovering around 9,400 recipients on that program. And last month, in February, we issued $2.3 million worth of those benefits. Our TANF, which is a cash assistance program for dependent families and children, that's averaging around 380 recipients on that program. 41 are adults and 348 are children. The Medicaid caseloads continue to hover around 24,000 recipients in Medina County. The Public Assistance Division also is part of a pilot project to upgrade the state's current childcare software system. Right now, if someone applies for childcare assistance, all the data entry is put into one system, and when they apply for other public assistance benefits, it's entered into a separate system, even though we're all living under the 232 Northland Drive building. So, we participated in design sessions with the state of Ohio. We've had extensive input on that process, and we've started training this week on that final product. So, it's been a wonderful opportunity for us to have firsthand knowledge about what the draft process looks like, have input on what we might see as problems for the entire state of Ohio. And then that training and the statewide rollout should begin probably late spring, early summer of this year. This, this actually will merge nearly all of our public assistance programs into one software system, so it will be much easier for workers from an inquiry access. I don't have to go somewhere else and figure out what someone's childcare benefits were or are, because that, that cost that they pay in childcare impacts other programs that we also determine eligibility on. So, everything will be much more streamlined and more continuity. It's also, I think I already said, the inquiry access is also made more efficient, too. So, I'm looking forward to that rollout, and I think the division is, too, because, like I said, they're looking in two places for kind of the same thing. The Child Protective Division, we've collected 8 million in current support payments. They've established over 6,500 cases. That's about 97%, so that the total amount of cases that we have, we've established, 97% of those have, have support established on them. And we've collected on about 2,700 past due cases. That's about $1 million on those past due cases. Unfortunately, there's about 4,700 cases with arrears that are past due, over totaling about $135 million. So, the 4D contracts that are being put in place right now, one with domestic relations, the prosecutors is in draft, same with the clerk of courts, and then the sheriff's department. So, that work continues in that room. The Child Protective, unfortunately, we have received over 423 calls reporting abuse and neglect. We have 92 children in care, and that's compared to 85 this same time last year. We have 56 foster homes. That's still an increase in what we had then last year. 28 children are placed in those 56 homes, and 47 children are placed with relatives or in other foster care networks that have been licensed outside of Medina County. We have 15 children residential facilities, and happily, two children are in approved adoptive homes waiting on that finalization. So, that's good news on their own. The state has actually launched a Culture of Safety Initiative, and it's at a collaboration between the Ohio State University and the state's Child Protective System. And the goal is, is twofold. First, it's safety outcomes for children, and then, secondly, it's reviewing organizational outcomes, including workforce retention, so kind of going to Amy's point. The state will allow 15 counties to join, and I've submitted an attempt from Medina County to be part of that 15, so hopefully, we get approved for that. It's a 12-month commitment, not only for myself, but also select Child Protective staff members. We're going to review organizations' strengths, as well as identify areas and address those to actively improve those things. And I had been meeting with that division on my own separately, talking about a lot of these same things, but although I'm the director and I'm doing those meetings, I do not suppose to have all the answers. So, opening this door and having an opportunity for staff to have this kind of input with educators and, and the state's Child Protective System, review outcomes for all things, I think it's an important thing for staff to be part of, and for me, too. This probably will roll out, they haven't selected the date yet because they're still considering how many counties can participate. It's probably summer, summer or fall. Those are my updates.
Very good. Very comprehensive.
So, I have one question for you.
Sure.
So, of the 24,000 folks that are receiving Medicaid assistance, and, and there's about 10,000 others that are on SNAP and TANF, is there overlap between those?
Sure, absolutely.
Any idea how much?
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't want to misspeak, but I could get that number to you.
Okay. I'd be, I'm just curious.
Sure. Yeah, the, the poverty threshold for Medicaid in, for children is higher. It's 200%, so families can earn more in order for children to have coverage. The SNAP program is about 130% of poverty, so there's a decent gap between eligibility for SNAP and having eligibility for Medicaid for children.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
Very good.
Thank you.
Next, Shannon Ryan, Transit Director. Good morning, Shannon.
I'll give you some information for our monthly update. We're currently in our audit time this year. NTD is going well. We're about three-quarters of the way through. Our submit will due by April 30th. That's our annual review of our financial and operational statistics. Going pretty well. Our team is getting a little bit better at capturing the data that's needed. We're also getting ready for a virtual trainer, try annual review. That's normally a three-year review. It'll be a four-year. They're going to virtually do that with us probably somewhere late April, early June. We've submitted preliminary information, and they come back and give us the once-over, or twice-over, or a third-over. So, that's always productive. I'm very happy to say the collective bargaining agreement with our union went really well. I think it was very amicable and very productive conversations. Thank you, Holly, for that. Just to get into how we went in February, we had two severe weather days, the 3rd and 4th of February. We did not run. We're looking at a severe weather plan for transit as been specified. The departmental heads will make some, will make their plans specifically, so we're going to be ready for that. I hope we don't have any more problems this year. I will also say rising fuel costs are affecting our cost per mile quite a bit. We're absorbing it. We made some plans to do that, so about half of us being absorbed by our adjustments of our per-mile cost with our agencies, about $34,000, $38,000 of that. It's rising. Tough to track, but we're projecting that fuel will continue to rise, and we're adopting, adapting to that. Last month, we had 34 demand service trip denials, which is too many. That's just a combination of more people wanting to go during the peak times, our early morning, our very, very early morning, and our late afternoons are becoming quite busy. We're having to move people around to different times, but basically, trip denial is our result. We're going to work hard to make some adjustments to make sure that we get that number down to zero, but it's quite difficult. The team does, works very hard to make sure we absorb as much as we can. Some good news, happy report, the onboard vehicle tablet success will allow us to go paperless manifest in April. It's a big deal for us. It allows us to get a lot of data, communicate, obviously, a lot more effectively with our drivers. I'm excited to say a lot of the drivers are saying, I'm excited to say a lot of the drivers are saying, can we get rid of this paper? So the yes, of course, conversations are happening, which is a really good news thing for us. Very productive software that allows us to schedule better and be more flexible. Moving forward, oh, we have a bus that was delivered, brought out to transit. It's actually out there right now for us to look over a new bus purchase, it's a gas bus. We're trying to maintain a relatively good cost on it, but that's rising. I've seen costs go from in the mid-eighties for these buses up to as far as a hundred and eight thousand for a basic vehicle. So they're getting more expensive. We do have a state contract money of sixty-four thousand dollars to put forth to this one vehicle. It'll replace bus sixteen, that's our oldest, and it's our last diesel vehicle. So we're trying to get that purchased. I've also found out that there is a prototype electric bus of our size floating around the area. The vendor's going to try to bring that out. I hope to show it to this group, so we can give it the once-over. It's not on the state contract yet, which tells me that it's not been quote-unquote approved for that mass purchase, but it's coming very soon. Got some preliminary cost, preliminary cost on the infrastructure. I've had some conversations, at least briefly, with Stephen about how we'd absorb that into our maintenance. But it's very new, and we're just taking that one step at a time.
What's the process of approval at the state? What does it, what do they do? Sorry to throw it at you.
It's approval of the vehicle contract, not the vehicle itself.
Right, okay.
Can they deliver on what they say they're going to be able to do? So they put it out to the vendors, and the vendors bid, so it's an, it's a state contract bid. They have to, so if there's five hundred vehicles that are needed, they have to be able to deliver that. And I think the vendors are just as hesitant as the state in getting into that yet.
Got it, so they have to have the guarantees, obviously, for performance.
Yeah.
Embedded in the contract.
Yeah, they have to basically have the vehicle, and all the specs are standardized, so you're buying on the spec. So it saves a lot of paperwork, it helps a lot, and allows us to buy, and an economy of scale.
Right, oh yeah.
If we buy at a better price, hopefully that cost goes down from that very large, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Well, I was just trying to make clear that it's not a technical evaluation as much as, at this point, a contractual.
That's what I understand it to be in speaking with Holly.
So Shannon, you, you kind of touched on this. So do you know what the price point differential is between a gas and an electric bus at this point?
Two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for the electric was, was what's been quoted.
So as opposed to eighty to a hundred and ten?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Now, I will tell you that the gas, I was looking at some gas equivalent personally on electric to gas. There's cost benefit in it, let the upfront cost in the strategic.
Right.
Plan to put it in place, have your infrastructure placed, and then get your bus. And there's also a capacity of a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty mile range a day that, and the fast charging. And I think, I think the bus is there, I think the charging is the issue for me, and then the, the maintenance cost to that.
So what do our buses run, each bus per day on average?
In the one-eighty to one-ninety range.
So you wouldn't get a full day out of it?
No, especially, there's a, there's a deadhead mile from our garage to Brunswick of fourteen-point-two miles. That's just getting the bus up there.
Right.
So, you know, that, that takes up a lot. We would love to be able to drive that down a little bit, but...
If you took a break in the day, how, how quickly does it recharge, do we know yet?
Good question.
So how quick is quick?
Yeah.
I've heard I can go to lunch and charge it to, two hours per charge. Two hours is basically what they're saying. And again, they're, they're hesitant to say what it'll do, because that's like trying to say, I'm going to get forty miles a gallon in a car, and you get what?
I would, I would agree with the strategy, we're not the earliest adopter in this, we ought to be waiting as a second or third.
Well, and we don't have enough charging stations across the county if one ran out.
Stephen has recommended we contact some, you know, the local provider and see what our capacity is. I learned in Columbus, their infrastructure near their Columbus Garage isn't so good, it's quite taxed. The Akron is very robust, so they have a really good charging station.
Right.
So it really depends what your infrastructure will hold, and that's the first step. I think we're going to have to look at this, because I, one thing I will mention, we're developing a TAM plan, a Transit Asset Management Plan, that's been, was developed in eighteen for nineteen through twenty-three. Currently working on the twenty-three through twenty-seven, allows us to figure out what vehicles we want to buy, but immediately they're like, where's your electric plan?
Well, if we're not in the first wave of purchasers, just like most technology, do you predict the price coming down, or no?
I think the demand's going to drive, I think the demand's going to drive agencies to look at this, just like it is for cars. So as gas prices and diesel prices continue to go up, diesel's a lot higher than gas on average. So I think the demand, some companies we're looking at is compressed natural gas, that's very expensive, and it's a little difficult to maintain, and it's a little, you know, it's quite intensive, I'd say, training-wise. So to answer your question, I think we're going to see a drop once the state contract hits. I think the economies of scale will bring it down a little lower.
But the federal transit is requiring us to develop that plan, though, that includes some phasing in. It's just a matter of how quickly, correct?
How quickly.
Right, okay.
And I think they're going to drive that. So Colleen, I think to answer your question, is the state contract, what help us, hopefully. Other good news is, we, we hired two drivers, we're currently in the process for hiring. Great gentleman that really, one gentleman said something I really liked, he says, I said, why do you want to do this? He said, I want to give back. And I really like that answer, and we have a lot of folks that care about the passengers. Hopefully, we get him in, three guys who get the process, great gentleman. I won't speak about him too much, but he definitely has some professional credentials. He could be doing anything but what he wants to do, so I was happy about that. Couple other things, we, our Strategic Planning Steering Committee is meeting on April nineteenth. We did have a preliminary meeting to talk about specific discussion points and some data that's really going to make sense for what we talk about. I'm really excited about this process. There's things that they're hitting all, they're checking all the boxes of what I like to say, so I'm really happy about that. We should be looking forward to some good news and some production, productive movement. And the kind of thing I don't want to talk about, but the TSA extended the mask mandate through April eighteenth. So I've been trying to stay close to that and see, if you read the fine print on some of the articles, is they're making plans on what to do. So I'm not sure if it's going to end or be modified, so just really not saying it's ending from what I can read.
Are they putting any provisions there for some flexibility locally depending upon the incident rate?
I think that might be, I think it's going to mirror somewhat the choice that the, the public has made to wear a mask or not. If I look at it that way, you know, if you want too good, if you don't, that's okay, too. I'm, I, I, but I haven't heard anything specific, but in discussions with other neighboring agencies like Akron and Columbus, they're kind of saying that's what they think, too, but we'll see. April eighteenth, we're still wearing masks and on the buses. Haven't had many incidents, other than people saying, really, but that's okay. You know, we just, we put sign, new signs up, new colorful signs to remind and put on our Facebook and our website.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, good job. Okay, we don't have any commissioners' resolutions, open to public comment? No comment, all right, discussion. Scott, do you have anything? Amy?
See, since we're Facebook Live, I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is the state's tornado drill. It's at nine-fifty in the morning. I know when I was over at sanitary, and Jeremy can attest to this, we had a pretty robust plan in, meeting in the parking lot, and we've been checked by the fire department in the past as, in terms of our evacuation success and so forth. Here, I recall last year it was a little more challenging trying to get everybody down to the first floor in that central corridor. So I would just encourage all of our departments, and in particular, the offices in this building, to participate.
It's at what time?
It's at nine-fifty in the morning. And I can say that last October, I think actually, Bill, you might have been driving back with the sheriff from Columbus, we had an actual tornado warning, and I was at the county home, you know, when that occurred, they executed their drill very successfully. So it was nice to have been a part of a drill that worked so successfully, and just, I prefer that everybody practice so that if ever we need it, everybody knows exactly what to do. So just that suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeremy, do you have anything?
Of course.
I wish you could see my paper, I've got a few things here.
I should have put them last.
Save them the best, right? The Heatherhead Project, just want to let you know that we did contact, contact the contractor, and he agreed that to cancel the project for the fifty-seven hundred dollars that was to, we gave him a notice to proceed once we awarded the project, as typical, especially with lead time, that there's restocking fees with materials that he ordered and his time, you know, for getting everything, bidding the project and all that. So we're working within, on an agreement with Mike Lyons, and then we'll pass resolution to rescind the award and to sign the agreement. So once we get that squared away, we'll, we'll move forward on that. Also speaking with Mike Lyons on the City of Medina Sewer Agreement, him and I are meeting on Thursday to kind of go over that contract. Our contract to operate and maintain the city's sewer system ends on the thirty-first of this year. So we're going to go over that and then start working with the city on that.
December thirty-first?
Yep. Did I say something different?
You said thirty-first of this year.
Sorry, thirty, you're right, December thirty-first.
I knew what he meant.
Yeah, thank you. Also, we did a permit, we had CT consultants work on a, to review our permit fees. We're kind of winding down on that. CT would like to come in probably somewhere in early April to kind of talk and discuss essentially what we recommended was going to a permit fee structure that is based on the property's water meter size. So this, as now, we calculate every place that comes in or out based on anticipated usage. This way, if their meter size isn't changing, their capacity really shouldn't be changing. So that's just the, the, a quick overview of that, so. And then also, I have, and this is, I'm going to jump over to our billing department.
So Jeremy, would that help when we have a change of use?
Correct.
And whether there is an incremental fee for that change?
Correct, if, you're probably not going to see these incremental increases anymore. Only if they go from like, say there is a one-inch meter, and they're going to a one-and-a-half inch meter, at that point, would we then collect additional capacity charges for that change in use.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Our billing department, we accept credit card payments through a web portal, e-checks, and the customers pay a convenience charge for that. It's a dollar ninety-five minimum, or two percent, or, I'm sorry, two-and-a-half percent of the, of the charge that they're looking to put on their credit or checking account, whichever is larger. They do offer what they call a traditional plan. The traditional plan would then be paid by the sanitary engineer department. For instance, if you look at the, kind of, what's it? So that total where you see is that seventy-two twenty-five, that would be the sanitaries, is what they would have to pay to eliminate all of the convenience fees to the customers. Now, that seventy-two twenty-five, again, is based on forty-seven thousand customers, not twenty-two. So if we cut that number in half, that's thirty-six hundred dollars a month, and then that cost would also get split up between sewer of sixty-six percent, water at thirty-three percent, just based on our customer base. We have a two-to-one ratio there of, of customers. So the idea would be to then, we're, the idea is that when you start moving to these traditional plans, that seven percent tends to move closer to that twenty-five percent is typically what they... So you're going to get customers that will, we won't have to process as much mail, as much checks through, in the mail. Also, customers like to use their credit cards to generate points, so we'd like to go...
When, when will this plan go into effect?
We have an agreement, we, we just have to still run that through legal with Mike Lyons, but we were hoping to maybe get this done in the next couple of months, if, you know, if the board approved that.
So the theory is to reduce the fees of credit cards, and we assume them so that there's less work on the backend in billing.
Correct, yeah.
Encourage use of credit cards.
Exactly, and one of the issues with credit cards sometimes is that, you know, you have a person that pays with a check, right? So, and then, you know, you process the check, but it's not for a couple of days that you might find out that there's non-sufficient funds. The way that the, the web portal works now is that it checks the credit card. Well, that, I mean, obviously, if they don't have the funds, it just doesn't allow it.
Right.
On a check, they do now have, it's actually just when, I think, a few days ago, where they actually check the credit card, I'm sorry, the, the checking account to see if there's funds in there. It can't prevent the customer from actually moving forward with the payment, but it does let them know. So we, we have had some customers play the bounce check game to avoid shut-off.
Will you do some sort of marketing campaign in the billing and stuff to let everyone know?
Oh, for sure, yeah, wires in, in our, in our system and website, and hopefully Brian could help us get that out, too, so.
So whatever incremental costs this, this will cost us will be offset by savings and labor.
Yeah, I mean, we're processing, yeah, eight to nine thousand checks a month, we'll call it, so.
Yeah.
You know, reducing that by twenty, thirty percent would be definitely a big, right, yeah.
Okay, I'm good, Bill.
And then the last item here, we'll get out of your hair. Over at the solid waste district, in the past, as far as, we're required to provide education and outreach to the public. In the, in the past, we've, we've done educational videos, the videos get put on the, on the, on the district's website, and, you know, people happen to go to the website, you know, that they see them. So what we would like to do is, there is another solid waste district in southern Ohio. They contracted with a consultant firm, where the consultant firm then hired an employee, and basically, this employee would reach out to like, local school districts, organizations in the, within their solid waste district, and they would do presentations to all, you know, and, you know, we're talking upwards of like, two hundred presentations a year. So the idea would be that this person would work with us, and they would be the ones, they would reach out to the school districts to get into the classrooms to, to, you know, give outreach to the solid waste district, landfill, recycling, and provide education out to, out to the community. So we would like to, we have a RFP kind of together that we would like to advertise, or submit a resolution to get authorization to advertise that. So just wanted to talk with you about that, and if there's any concerns or questions. We would make this a performance-based contract, so this way they aren't going to be like, oh, you know, you know, we're, you know, it's going to be, let's just say, sixty thousand dollars, and, you know, they only do fifty, right? So there'd be mechanisms for us to say, okay, if you only hit certain amounts, you're not going to get the full contract amount, so it would be performance-based.
So the funding for this comes through the solid waste?
Through the solid waste district.
District.
Correct, that's part of their responsibility.
And is this in the budget, in their budget, or some?
We, we, basically, we expect this program to cost as much as we were spending on the education piece that was previously in place.
Okay.
All right, well, that's all I got today.
Very good.
I'll try to keep it shorter next time.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Holly, anything? Stephen? Okay. We have Lead Institute, Terry Green with Leadership Medina County, talk to us. Good morning.
Good morning, Terry. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So, so I'm here today to talk to a little bit about Leadership Medina County. For those of you who don't know, Leadership Medina County is a nonprofit organization that focuses on developing leaders in Medina County to give back and assist on some of the issues that Medina County is facing. So you all know about our leadership, our signature program, and that's more of a civic engagement program, and we also have our junior leadership program, which is for high school students who can apply in their sophomore year for their junior year. Recently, two years ago, we, we introduced the LEAD Institute, and LEAD stands for Leadership Exploration and Development, and it is a professional development program, very different from our civic engagement program and our signature program. And it really focuses on educating and professionally developing any level of leader, any age of leader. We do things like, we train, we do a lot on self-awareness as a leader, to become a more effective leader. We do emotional intelligence, we do strength finders, we do conflict management and resolution, we do critical, critical thinking and problem solving, all kinds of neat things. I actually brought some brochures that I can leave by, did you want one now?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, sure, be good.
Okay.
I thought they were going to be in the packet, so I'll...
Yeah, I can put them in the packet. But that kind of outlines all the different things we do with the LEAD Institute. It is like our signature program in that it's a nine-month program. You apply, the application process right now is currently fairly simple. You go online to our website and you apply for the program. All of our programs are application-based, you have to get accepted into the program. And we just opened up applications on March first, and then the deadline for applying for all three of these programs is, is June first. So it's, it's, you meet once a month for a full day. We go off-site, and we do, we do educational training. We also, with the LEAD Institute, as an introduction to our signature program, we will also introduce some of the issues in Medina County, and we work on, not a full-fledged class project like our signature program, but we do do thirty-one acts of kindness, each year, next year will be thirty-two acts of purposeful kindness in the county. So when they get the whole full, the opening retreat, they get the graduation, all of that stuff. So, so that's a set scheduled program. To apply, you go online, but you can also see our schedule there, because you are required to commit to that schedule when you get accepted into the program. A new program that we offer is kind of a combination of our signature and our LEAD Institute program. So we're calling it Custom Leadership Training. And so this is something brand-new to leadership, kind of stumbled upon it, working with one of the manufacturers here in Medina County who had three shifts of folks that were working, could not commit to a monthly commitment and to send all of her leaders out in one year. So, so we actually built a program, we call it Discover Medina County, and it's also professional development. So we're building in, they kind of hand-picked some of the, the professional training that we offer. They're doing emotional intelligence, conflict resolution, and communication skills, because those were things that they actually saw as a need with their leadership team. And so we're, we're building it around their schedule, and it's going to be over a course of a year, and they'll meet seven times over the year. We will introduce them to also some of the, the key resources in Medina County that they feel that their leadership team is dealing with, with their employees. So we'll introduce them to, they were very interested in learning more about Habitat for Humanity and giving back that way. This particular manufacturer was new to Medina County, so they're really looking to get more involved in the community, and they want their leaders to do so, too. So we can actually build this leadership program based on the resources that we have between the LEAD Institute and the signature program. So, so if it's something that, you know, the directors here in the county are interested in talking about further, I would be very happy to sit down with you to do that. We can build something, you know, that to fit the needs of the different departments here in the county, and it's, we do require, you know, to make it cost-effective, because we are a nonprofit, that we have at least eight to ten people in that program. And then we can build a schedule for them, we can kind of hand-pick what you want to cover in that program, and, and then we'll build it for you. So if you're interested, I will also leave my card. Most of your alumni that I'm looking at here, so you have access to the directory on the website. But you can always give me a call, I'm happy to sit down with you, Colleen, and I can come in and talk to you. But it is something new, and we've, we've, since introduced it, we saw a lot of need for it. So, so it's particularly with the manufacturers here in the county. So, so my, my email address, you can email me, you can call me. If you're interested in having any of your employees apply to the current set scheduled programs, you can access those applications online, and, and then we will, we'll go from there.
I think, I thought all the way, I've been through the signature program, and I think...
Um, and I think, uh, part of this discussion bring it up here for the Lead Institute. Um, when we look at that specific program, I know we do, uh, pay for the signature program. And I think we obviously ought to be establishing our consent that, that we have employees that see the need of going through the Lead Institute. That would make some sense, but likewise, we, with this customization, we also have the opportunity now maybe work with Amy and Scott and so forth to kinda devise and see with our, uh, department heads here, if there's an opportunity here to put together a cohort, a group, nine, ten people and look at the training needs there that, uh, some of the program elements might be able to address. Rather than sending them out of the, out of the county, going to some of these larger ones, being able to actually do this customization and bring in the resources here.
Yes, yes, I would agree.
Yeah.
Me too.
I think it's something that could benefit them.
I'm looking forward to talking to anybody who's interested then.
Great, well, thank you.
And I will leave these in my cards, I'm jumping right inside here.
Yeah, just.
Okay, here's the signature.
Now, as I understand the Lead Institute too, that, uh, would you look up, uh, you try to with any organization, I know there's a limited number. And likewise, I know that the, the price is really a bargain price. Uh, in fact, I know the, the rate's actually gonna go up next year, uh, for Lead.
Got some inside information here.
Because we looked, we, we looked at the costs and it's going to, it definitely was going to be going up. But we're, you're limited, basically, uh, if you look at Medina County in terms of the employer, you'd be limited only to two individuals, correct? Uh, yeah, just because of the demand.
Yeah, we do have to lend it, because we, as you know, we try to build a diverse class so that we can bring in different perspectives and training opportunities to learn from each other.
So all the more we would probably ought to be looking at the customization, uh, to be able to do that. Because I, I would forecast, given, uh, all our leadership teams, I mean, there's some elements here, diversity and equity and inclusion, uh, communication skills, conflict resolution, negotiate, all these kinda things, all our departments can gain from that. And, uh, I think be able to have the flexibility to, as you indicated with the customization, you basically do two days, you split it off so that a smaller group can meet like five and four, or four and five, or whatever. And so basically have some flexibility in terms of scheduling during a, a work week.
Yeah, we can build it however you'd like. I mean, this particular client, they actually wanted, they had two shifts of folks that they needed to accommodate, so they couldn't have them all out on the same day. So they did two full days, twice, you know, uh, in the month. Um, but if that doesn't work and half-days are better, we can do that too.
So there's that flexibility with the customization that we could utilize to be able to have our department heads, because we can't expect them all out to go out the same day.
Right.
In any program. So I think that, that, that's, uh, this, this looks like a great opportunity for us to be able to access that and be able to then fit it in with our regular training.
And is this something that, uh, we would consider offering to other electives, their departments?
Well, they, they have it within their budget, they can, they're qualified now, are they not? For the, um, for the signature program, uh, I presume.
Well, I'm pretty sure if we do the custom program.
Oh, the custom program, um, sure, sure, I'm, I'm fine with that. But we'd have to include them in the conversations as to what elements or what, uh, specific programming.
What the customization will be.
Yeah, what they, they're looking for.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You do, uh, were, are you doing Amazing Race this year?
Of course, we are, September tenth.
Oh, it's September tenth, okay, September tenth.
One of the, one of the program topics is radical candor, and I'm kinda wondering what that one's about.
I, that's, that was a new one we brought in this year, it was introduced to us and we loved it.
September tenth, thank you for telling me.
All right, very good, all right, all right, thank you. All right, um, is there anyone else? Discussion, all right, Kathy?
I have two projects coming in the next month or so. Uh, so the first one is Nelson Family Properties. They are a manufacturer of water treatment equipment and some, they also do assembly there. Um, they're bringing us forty-five jobs, they're gonna invest sixteen million in the Portside Commons Industrial Park. Um, Sharon Township has approved, the school board has approved, so we're in that waiting period for notification and then that one will be coming before you.
Are they gonna build a new building or brand-new building?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Uh, there's one land, piece of land there. So when you pull into the park, it's on the left.
It's in right there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, and then you may recall that the Granger Township established their CRA zone to lure in the Pleasant Valley Corporations, multiple building, uh, what they call Akron-Medina Cor- Park. We are now looking at building eight, so it worked. Uh, and so building eight is going in, uh, we're hoping that Granger will approve it on Monday next week. So it will come to you next week on Tuesday, because the school board has a. Um, that one's gonna be a three-point-two-million-dollar investment, thirty-five thousand square feet and thirty new jobs are estimated. So, we're excited about both of those and if I can't be here, now you know, so.
Very good, all right, thank you, thank you.
Um, Hallie, anything?
Sure, I went to the, um, in public meeting that was held at Sharon Township last night. Denise Testa ran a presentation with ODOT, um, Denise did a great job. Um, what I found from, um, the meeting was that many of the people of Sharon Township are concerned about potential traffic patterns and potential safety issues pulling out of their homes when the potential five developments going off of ninety-four are completed. So, um, three of them, I think, are still in the conceptual kind of plan phase, have not completely gone through the planning commissions process. So I will be making a request to, uh, the Board of Commissioners to submit, um, an official request for a traffic study once the first development is completed, because is potentially two hundred new homes, um, plus vehicles per home, um, going in that corridor that is just south of the Sharon Circle heading south off of ninety-four. So it is two hundred homes in a, in a very specific area, so the resident, existing residents there are very concerned about traffic and safety. So once the first development is done, I think we should submit a request to ODOT for a traffic study.
It'd be a lot of speed study primarily.
Speed study, yes, because they, they're very concerned about it.
Right.
Okay.
So does ODOT, as a matter of course, require?
It depends, and this is so different, how it's five different developments off of ninety-four going off at five different times. And a couple of them, uh, like that under fifty, you know, one's forty-nine lots, one's sixteen lots. So some of them are under certain, right? And they're, and they're, and they're different projects, just happen to be concentrated in that area because that is the area where they have the less density. Um, it's not one house per two acre in that corridor, because they have the potential for water and sewer, partially connecting some with Wadsworth, some with us. Um, so that is their corridor with the less density and a lot could be coming at one time.
Okay.
I think, yeah, it's with the planning issues and so forth, that the subdivisions are not connected. So in terms of trans, basically, uh, if you wanna get out, go to the adjoining, you have to go out on the main route, uh, because of the lack of those connections.
Yeah, I just want the people at the meeting, it was a public hearing, that was the overwhelming concern. I, I want them to know that we heard their concern and we did take a step one necessary.
Sure, sure. Well, I think that, yeah, ODOT's very much concerned of studying that as a corridor rather than each individual subdivision as it comes in.
Right, well, I think they need to study Route Three from Medina to Seville as well.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of areas in, in the county that, uh, are ripe for development.
And the meeting wasn't really about, you know, um, traffic and speed. It really was informing the public about access coming out of ninety-four as these developments.
Right.
Um, and safe access according to ODOT's rules and regulations, so, but, um, the concern was overwhelming.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Um, I, I talked to the Fair Board, or members of the Fair Board about the War Bond Building, and they are favorably disposed to, uh, to taking it.
Okay.
Um, they have a meeting next week with the Facilities Committee to talk about where it might go and, um, so I, I did tell them that it would remain, uh, the property of the Commissioners and that the Commissioners would be responsible for maintaining it.
Yeah.
And, um, so there, uh, I, I'll also touch base with the Historical Society to see if there are any interior amenities that could be provided to make it a more of a museum kind of thing during fair.
Yeah, I talked to them, I've talked, had a conversation with Brian Farron, they, uh, I guess there are concerns, even with the fairground, looking at is, is where it's going to be at. Is it going to be accessible to the public throughout the year only or during a fair time? Likewise, it's security, and so all those questions, I think, need to be addressed.
Yeah, well, I mean, it would be, yeah, only accessible when the fairgrounds are accessible, so.
Well, and so that-
But where it's at now is not exactly accessible either, so.
Right, well, I think we've had alternative sites, actually, uh, Historical Society may be actually, uh, worth consideration, McDowell Phillips House. They have property over there and whether they can then fit it in with, uh, thematically, um, with, with their, their, their displays and so forth.
Are they interested?
Uh, they need to have, and I think we're gonna have to continue talking as to what that.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to the, uh, I'll continue to talk with the Fair Board, but then maybe, maybe, uh, I'll touch base with Brian as well and.
Sure.
So that we don't make a commitment to one and then.
No decision has been made, in other words.
Right, right, in either case, in either case, so.
Speaking of discussions, any more, uh, word from University of Akron?
Uh, trying to set up a meeting, uh, to actually go to the facility and, um, with Christina and Terry Rice.
Excellent.
And, and tour it and then to see what they'll do, so.
Great.
Um, I did get an email back that the emails that I gave to them to set up the, uh, the meeting weren't good emails. So, I think I needed the OH Medina Co. instead of Medina Co., but anyhow, yeah, we're still working on it.
Okay, great.
All right, anybody else I missed, discussion, Scott or John, right? Okay, if that, we, uh, there's a motion for, for-
I will make a motion to go into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee.
Second.
Move second, roll call please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, if you don't join us, have a good week.
Thank you very much for coming out for this, uh, topping ceremony. Uh, Commissioner Steve Hambley, uh, at Board, President of the Board of Commissioners, and this is an important celebration. Uh, when we, there was a lot of milestones when it comes to buildings, um, and a number of things we came to get, last time we came to all together to celebrate, uh, the groundbreaking. And that's some significance there, because it involves you taking ideas and making them into reality. It's kind of like our humanity, we're from dust and will return to dust. Same thing with buildings, they're made from the earth and eventually they return, so that, that, that initial. But, and that you're kind of celebrating that the ideas turned into reality. But this, the topping off ceremony, another celebration. And I know in the program, Brian, and they did a very good job kinda talking about the history and I know we hear about it. But really, it's a celebration, I think best, of the workers. This is a celebration of, of the workers, what they've done. When we look at the, the craftsmen out there, the tradesmen, the people, they've done the heavy lifting. This is the superstructure that's going to remain, that builds upon that foundation that was established in the groundbreaking. And that's the next best, I'll say, milestone. George Voinovich, as some of you may remember, uh, was, he was basically, uh, he was gu- governor, senator, but also he was mayor of the city of Cleveland. And I know a person who was close to him told me once that the, that Voinovich never went to groundbreakings. He really hated going to groundbreakings, because those are just promises and ideas and, yeah, you go ahead. The important milestones he said he reportedly went to were topping off ceremonies, because that's the work that's getting done. And of course ribbon cuttings, ribbon cuttings is where it's open to the public and the purpose of the building is established. And then it's unfolded as to what, how that building is used. So those were his two favorite things when it came to buildings. And I think that we'll, we'll kinda continue that tradition. The most important thing we're doing is recognizing all the hard work. With us today, we have Commissioner Bill Hudson will say a few words, Commissioner Colleen Sweattick. We're electing county commissioners who made the commitment on behalf of the public, likewise, and overseeing the design and working with all the parties as I was taking that idea to reality and also, or, and seeing that the workers here, that they were supplied, that, what, everything we could do to help provide support for them so that the people that are engaged and the organizations are engaged, they're actually accomplishing a whole lot. And we're going to celebrate that. And then we have with us Judge Dunn, who represents actually one of the purposes here. This is, this house, this purpose is, this is a house of justice, this is the court of justice. This is where people will come to seek equity. They will come and fi- hopefully find the equity they deserve, the justice they deserved. We have with us also Sharon Ray, Sharon Ray, who's our state representative, where the state provides the laws that the judge will be looking to apply to specific circumstances. So here we have people for, with us today to say a few words and talk about the purpose of this great, great structure. And of course, with us, Mayor Hanwell, who represents the community that houses this. This is our, this is the capital of, or our city, our, where our city is based, where our county is based, where the functions of this courthouse will be. And of course, the support of the community that is embedded in all of this and involved in, in, in all these various functions. And with that, I'll, I'll turn over the microphone to my colleague, uh, Bill Hudson, to say a few words. But I just want to thank you all, thanks to all the workers and everybody that's engaged in, in this great enterprise. And thank you so much for the workers that have done this so well, that we get that final beam in. And from here, it's just filling in the blanks. So I'll give it over to Bill Hudson now, thank you.
Good afternoon. What we have going up behind us, uh, in front of you all, uh, is an example of collaboration and teamwork. Um, this project has been contemplated for well over twenty years. Um, I've been working on it myself for four or five years. There were many times when I questioned where it would actually, uh, take place. Uh, I had a lot of conversations with Councilman Lamb and, uh, we worked through, uh, a lot of differences successfully. Um, there's been a, a, many, many individuals and many, many, uh, companies and partners that have come together to make this happen. And, um, uh, I appreciate it, I think it is a great asset for Medina County and will serve the county for many years to come, so thank you.
I'm lowering my fresh urine. Um, I, I'd like to say thank you to a couple of significant people. Of course, I'd like to thank the architects and the construction team, you're doing a wonderful job and I really appreciate it. But I do think there's three significant people on this project that have worked so hard, put in so many hours and so many meetings and, um, really behind the scenes, put their heart and soul into this project. And that is Commissioner Hudson, he has spearheaded the project, Scott Miller and Stephen Bastian. They have worked endless hours on this project and they deserve a lot of kudos. And I just really appreciate all of their work, thank you very much.
I just came here today because I'd like to celebrate and congratulate this momentous achievement. Construction projects are notoriously difficult, the planning is laborious, they're expensive, they're inconvenient. But you guys have all made it happen and quite honestly produced a courthouse that will be functional and beautiful for the Medina County citizens for decades to come. And I am so excited to see this day. Uh, we got as far as the parking deck when I was here, we couldn't bring it home, but you guys did it and congratulations to all of you.
I'm Judge Dunn, I'm the judge of the probate and the juvenile court here in the Common Police Court. On behalf of myself and Judge Collier and Judge Kimbler and our, uh, departed Judge, uh, Mary Kovak. Uh, this is an incredible day for us. Uh, when I came into office, uh, this was something that was always considered and something that we never thought would come. And I could tell you that a lot of people have put their hearts and their souls, their efforts into this project through numerous, uh, countless drawings, uh, representations, going back and forth and working with people to come up with solutions that will hopefully take our county, uh, to a place that you won't have to be doing upgrades every couple of years. We won't have, uh, cases being, not being able to be heard because we have HVAC issues, all those kinds of things that we suffer through. This building should do the trick. Uh, I would like to thank the county commissioners for having the foresight and the willingness to pursue this project. Uh, the county administrator, Scott Miller, uh, Steve Bastine, who is the maintenance supervisor, are integrally in, involved in this. Uh, they've been so kind to even allow us to get space to tape out what we'd like for our courtrooms. Uh, that individual, uh, sharing with us has been invaluable. We hope to take this building, uh, we've tried to build it for the future so that changes and judges as we come and go and while I'm well out of here and my grandkids are in this county, this building will be, still be useful and being operable in, in a fashion that will keep the people of Medina County safe and secure. Uh, the building would be wonderful and be able to use for a lot of different purposes, but for a system that we need justice, I think it will instill confidence in the public that we're doing the right thing. And I can say this from my perspective, I couldn't be happier, starting off with drawings that were handed to me my first day in office and to where we are now. And those, uh, original drawings were scrapped, uh, a whole process has come together and I think this will do great things for our community. The costs of this have been fabulous, um, I can't say enough for the contracting group, the architects, uh, suffering through with our, uh, numerous changes. And the steel workers are out here. I've never seen guys crank a building up this fast in my life, and quite frankly, we're going to be in this building this time next year, and I'm looking forward to having another discussion with you. So on behalf of all the court personnel, all the folks that are going to be using this building, we're very thankful for you, and we look to do our best for you in the future. Thank you.
So on behalf of the city of Medina, I'm honored to be here, along with three of our seven council members, Council-at-Large Bill Lamb, Ward One Councilwoman Jess Hazelton, and Ward Three Councilwoman Reggie Hare. Joe Saucegiver is a clerk of our municipal courts, he's here from the city as well. I'd personally like to thank Scott Miller and the Board of County Commissioners for your tenacity, your hard work, and the ability to get this court built. As was mentioned, the city and the county have been working together to resolve our court issues for over two decades. This is the start of a safe, effective, and efficient courtroom, and the city is very pleased that you kept it on the square, because that was important to the city, to have it on the square for the vitality of our square, not only for all the workers here, but for everybody that comes to the court. And we hope that this is going to last. The previous building lasted over fifty years, we're hoping this lasts fifty-plus. And the design, the ability is going to make that happen. And last but not least, I can't walk away without saying, it remains my hope and prayer that the municipal court ends up being in the nineteen-sixty-nine building, and we will then have the majority of all courts in Medina County at one location for the benefit of the public. God bless. With that, that concludes all the speechifying, so I guess now they raise the beam, right?
Hello, it's ten forty-six, we're out of executive session.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, everybody have a good week.